Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 3 meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. It's good to see everybody this evening. Welcome to my colleagues. Some of us have been traveling. It's good to see you, everybody back home safely. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices. And I think everybody here probably knows this already, but I see some unfamiliar faces. If you would like to address the council tonight on items not on the agenda, there are forms in the back of the room. If you'd fill those out, give them to the city clerk to my left, and we would be happy to hear from you. So if you would, please stand and join me with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask your blessing on our meeting tonight. Open our hearts and minds that we might make sound decisions that advance the prosperity of our amazing city. We pray in a special way tonight for all those affected by the COVID virus and for the medical workers bravely providing care for them. We pray also for our great country and ask you to heal the divisions that exist among us. Help us tonight to be an example of how people with differing views can work together to promote the common good of all. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have no proclamations or recognitions or presentations or board appointments, so we'll jump right into the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Approved.
Motion and a second. Are there any corrections or comments on the meeting minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
No nays, the minutes are approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. A three-minute time limit is imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers come to the podium and state your name and city of residence prior to making your comments. During public comment on items not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance, as well as the elected officials, do make note of these items of concern, and we do follow up on things that are brought to our attention. So I currently only have one request to speak, and that is from Annette Rennie. Mrs. Rennie?
Hello.
Welcome. Good evening.
Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. I know that you cannot answer this question tonight, but again, and I've emailed all of you, and I've emailed you pictures, I would like some idea in the near future of when the oak tree's coming down on Temple Terrace Highway by the pond and when the wall is going to be taken down that the city owns. It is leaning toward the street. It obstructs the view coming from east to west. There are also a lot of people that walk on that sidewalk. If that wall comes down, guess what, folks? We're in trouble. So, you know, I've asked and asked, this is probably the third time, and if you could at some point give me an idea, it would really be helpful. Several neighbors were going to come, and I said, let me try one more time, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie. Excuse me. That's the only request I have so far to speak. Are there other members of the public who'd wish to address the council on items not on listed on the agenda? Okay. Next item is a lien reduction petition for property located at 108 Mission Hills Avenue. Code Enforcement Board Chairman David Begorilich is here. Welcome, Mr. Begorilich.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair. You're in council. Tonight I have one case for you, a recommendation for a lien reduction. That is case 16-0491. This case originated in April of 2016 for a damaged roof. The date the order was placed by the code board was August 10, 2016. It finally came into compliance on July 31, 2020, nearly four years later. The city costs are $1,243.24. The original fine was $64,800. At our code meeting, this particular case was a split vote, and I cast the deciding vote for $3,000 because of the facts presented at the hearing and the fact that the $3,000 seemed consistent with previous cases of similar nature. And the recommendation to us tonight is $3,000 paid within 30 days, or it reverts back to the original amount. Now, stand for questions.
Very good. Prior to questions, is the property owner a representative here to speak tonight?
I don't believe so. I don't see them in the audience.
Okay. Are there members? I know there's at least one member of the public. I have a request to speak from Mrs. Tumbelson. Well, yeah, don't go far there, Mr. Begorilich, because there may be questions. Welcome, Mrs. Tumbelson. That does not look comfortable.
It's fine. How are you doing?
Good, thank you.
For your counsel, thank you very much. Okay, as a resident of Temple Terrace, I believe that the fine should not be reduced. Hours provided by Code Enforcement, Community Development, and other administrative offices shall not be paid by the residents. The Code Enforcement Board in June of 2016 was kind to delay the action for 60 days before the fine went into effect, but nothing was done at all. Okay. The present owner stated he knew about the lien, but was hoping the board would reduce it, and he would not be penalized, and they would bring the lien down to zero, and this is per the minutes of July 21. Over the years, the expense for the city and for the city and the neighborhood has been endured as inappropriate. The reduction proposal for $60,800 to $65,000 was suggested by the Code Enforcement Director, which was 10%. Now, the board approved $3,000, $3,000. The property, by the report, has five open permits at this time. Are the permits to be scheduled? Have they been closed? Is a CO ready? The owner states the property is ready to sell within two weeks. The asking price by the realtor is $425,000. The city in Temple Terrace is an amazing city due to all the departments. We need to keep it that way. Code enforcement is a main thing for we need to do to uphold the restrictions and ordinances by the city. Again, the reduction of the lien is inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tumbelson. As I see, we had a late arrival. Sir, we're discussing a lien reduction petition for 108 Mission Hills Avenue. Is that what you're here for tonight? Are you the petitioner?
Oh, I am the owner.
Would, okay. It would be appropriate at this point if you'd like to make a statement. Now would be the time. We just ask you to come to the podium and state your name prior to your comments?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Ibrahim, Ibrahimie. I'm the owner of this property. I bought this property a little over a year ago from Mr. Richard. He had that property in distress for years and years. He had over $90,000 mortgage on the property, and there was no way for him to fix it or keep it that, and the only option he had to keep it that way. I came, I bought the property, and when I bought it, it was, it was this. It was really a ruin, not a building. And I bought this from him. It was covered by tarp. Most of, pretty much all of the wood was destroyed by the thermite, and the roof was completely destroyed by the thermite and was fallen down. So I purchased this property, and I know I purchased under a, my LLC. I am a army contractor, saved up a little bit of money from my deployments, and started buying and remodeling homes. Last meeting, there was a gentleman here. He suggested that I should charge, I should be charged more because I'm a company, I make a lot, they, the companies make, buy these homes and buy, make a lot of money. That is not usually the case. That seems like it. Well, sometimes it happens, but on this case, may not happen. I bought this house and ran to some crook unlicensed contractors. They robbed me over $30,000, and I never saw them again. And then by the time I got into a permits approved, planning, drawings approved by the city, the price of the material went up three to four times. I bought this for $100,000, spent over $290,000 on this property, which brings me to about $400,000. We have listed it for $425,000, and haven't, it's been in the market for two weeks and haven't sold it yet. But I think what is much more important is what I have done for this house and to the community. The neighbors were very distressed, and it was very unfair to them, the previous building the way it was. But now every single neighbor have come forward and thanked me for doing this. This is one of the most beautiful homes on that street right now. And in and outside, we have remodeled, turned this to the most beautiful house in the market. And if it sells for $425,000 with carrying cost, holding cost, and all of that, I'm not going to make money, but the city and the neighborhood will gain a lot of value from this. And all of these code enforcement and violations that happened, none of them happened under my watch. What I did to rebuild a beautiful home for the community and for the county and city, and I shouldn't be penalized for that. I understand that county has incurred costs by reinforcing this code, and I think it is fair for me, because of, for whatever reason, I have inherited this, to pay that. But I think anything more than that will be penalizing me for doing what I did for the neighborhood and community. Again, none of these violations happened during, when I owned the house. All of them happened before me. And again, one of the gentlemen, last time sitting over there, he said, well, companies should pay more because it's not a, you know, your average Joe that can't afford to fix it. Well, he couldn't afford to fix it, true. It is me that came and took care of all of the violations and brought a lot of value to the community and the street. And I should be encouraged to do that, not penalized for doing that. And like I said, it was just bad timing out of my control that price of the material went up three to four times, and I ended up spending twice what I was planning to spend when I bought the house. And if I get, I've listed for $425,000. If I get the asking price, I'll probably break even considering the holding cost and a year on my time and money that tied up in there. So please, to encourage me and people like me to do similar nice jobs in the, in the community, just don't penalize me for it.
Very good. If you would, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you could take your seat, but don't go far because we may have some questions for you.
Of course.
So we're kind of jumbled here a little bit because of the late arrival. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak on this?
As you all know, I'm a realtor, Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge. When you do, when you purchase any home, a municipal lien search is done. Any liens or any permits that are open, everything comes up, and if all those aren't satisfied, you can't sell or close that house. So while I've gone past the house several times and it's attractive, it's priced very high for the square footage and the location, and I don't believe it's fair to our code department or our neighbors or anybody to set a precedence. It's not just the code people that are going out. We have to pay for gas, cars, paperwork, people, office work, insurance. I mean, these things need to be covered. There, it's, it's just not right. We are setting a precedence, and people on the street know it. This is not personal, but it is what it is in this business. I can't tell you how many times I've had to call permitting to have help getting permits closed that other sellers have left and not, and had to have them closed before they could close on their houses. So we can't keep making exceptions, and we do have to cover the costs that are incurred by our code people and our permitting people. And to do this is just wrong. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Other members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Jack Reeder, 227 Willowick Avenue. I watch the code meetings. I come to the code meetings. I think that there's a problem. The problem is, we need in all cases on these lien reductions to say, the cost to the city is part A. Part B is the penalty. Why don't we do this, and then we'll know whether we are recovering our cost for this problem? And B, let the board decide on the punitive side. That would be part B. That's my suggestion. But what happens at this meet, at some of these meetings on these reductions is ridiculous. Five years, that house sat there. It was a blight on the community. What do we recover? $3,000. How much of that was cost to the city, and this gentleman gets away scot-free? I know he didn't commit the violations, but he bought them knowingly. Shame on him. Thank you.
Other members of the public? If not council members, questions for Mr. Begorilich or the petitioner? Mr. Chambers, council member?
For Chairman Begorilich. At the code board meeting, the city's recommendation was 10%, $6,500, correct?
That's correct.
And they, they voted for $3,000, correct?
Yes, it was, ultimately, the motion was for $3,000. It was a split vote, two to two, and I broke the tie.
Thank you. And I think I read, and I was at the meeting, so I do know. What was the city's hard cost?
The city's hard cost was $1,243.24.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Vice Mayor Donahue?
Did you have your hands?
Go ahead.
So my question is, for that length of time, $1,200 doesn't seem like an accurate city cost. I mean, how could it only be that one? You've had others, but the...
The length of time is not indicative of the city cost. The city costs involve notices, visitations to the site. In this particular case, the roof wasn't going anywhere. The property hadn't changed. There was no activity at the site, so the number of visitations by the site, by the code officers was down. And, you know, the original owner was there. He got noticed. The fine was accruing. The situation wasn't changing, so there wasn't a whole lot of visitations.
Okay. So my question about, we came up with a 10%, didn't we?
Yes, sir. That's me.
Okay. So I, first of all, I want to say to the owner, thank you for what you did. I appreciate what you've done. However, I find it very difficult for us to go below the 10% when that's pretty much our, you know, because apparently somebody said to him, just go ask them to forgive you, and you won't have to pay anything. Well, I want the word on the street that that's not true, that, and homeowners who let their homes go to that point and then sell them and say, well, don't worry, city is all forgiving, they'll take care of this. They need to know that's not true either, and that, can we prevent them from selling their home unless they, how does that work? I mean, who bears the onus on this? He bought it with the lien.
Title company.
So the owner sold, I mean, number one, I want to say, if he hadn't bought the house, it would still look that way. Okay? And I'm not trying to gouge you because you're a businessman. Thank you for doing this. But I, I do have a problem with going below the 10% in that what does that send to the, to everyone else who has gone before us, and we said, well, 10% is our threshold? And then the ones coming behind us, and like, well, I mean, he worked as fast as he could, but he had another reason, was trying to get rid of that house. I don't blame him, trying to get, get it sold before everything went through the roof.
Recommendation from Officer Beroni was 10% or $6,500. You certainly are welcome to not accept the recommendation from the board and go with the 10%.
Okay. I'm just, I'm really trying always to be supportive of our municipal boards and what their decisions are. This one, just in reading it, I mean, there were some really strong opinions here, and so...
Well, you saw the vote.
I did. I did. And you, as the chair, had to make a decision, and you decided, so I don't want to second-guess you, but, you know, you've, you've been in this position up here, and you know how many times we supported those boards, so I just wonder what swayed you to have...
Well, what swayed me was, I saw the writing on the wall, and we had to get the motion passed. Well, why, I certainly would have, quite frankly, would have liked to seen the 10%. That 10% had no chance of passing. In order to bring you something for you to deal with, quite frankly, I was able to break the tie at that, at that point, pass a, a, a motion that while it was not to my 100% liking, it was more than double the city cost and seemed like a fair and equitable decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schuster?
Yes. A couple of questions. Ms. Sashon, what is the legal way that a house can be sold with a lien of this nature still there without that being satisfied at the time of sale?
There, a lot of people just make deals between a seller and a buyer. There isn't a title company involved. There isn't any research, and the liens are not discovered. Sometimes title companies, even when they are involved, they don't go looking for municipal liens all the time. Instead, they go, and what their job is, is to make sure that the, that who is selling has the authority to sell. So they're looking at chain of title. They don't go and bother and look at municipal liens or ordinance violations at all. So it is possible to buy a house not knowing you have this lien. Certainly, a seller should be honest in a disclosure and tell you the lien is there. I looked at the minutes on this particular one, and this is going a little beyond your question, but the original motion that was made was just for the costs. However, there seemed to be some dissent, and, and the dissent was, this isn't just an individual who owns a house, this is a business. That is not to be a consideration. Individuals and businesses, they are all considered individual persons under the law, and they should all be treated exactly the same. So to find somebody more because they have an LLC and own a business, that is not proper to do that. So I kind of see what happened here. It looks like then they went to a higher amount, and as Mr. Begorilich said, he was trying to get this motion passed and done, but it sounded like some of the members were trying to appease another member who was having an issue with this and thinking that a business should somehow be more responsible than an individual that owned the house. We're talking about punishing somebody here who didn't cause the violation. He's the only person who stepped up, he took a chance with this big lien on it, and he came in and he fixed it in a very short amount of time, it seems like, too. So I'm not recommending, the, the option here is to, that you all make a decision on this. You also have the option of sending it back to Code Enforcement to, without this unconstitutional criteria they came up with, but I don't believe that this particular owner wants this delayed any further. I'm under the impression he's wanting to do something with this house, and so that would only delay this further. So I don't rec, so I'm hoping that the board make, or the council make a decision tonight, so.
Well, thank you for the information. I would hope that you would convey that to the board next time you speak with them because it is important, and it should be, it should be brought to them specifically. When did you, did you, to the petitioner, did you know there was a lien when you bought the house?
Please step up to the, please.
Thank you. We, based on the situation of the house, I was...
Did you know there was a lien on the house when you bought it?
No, I didn't know if there was a specific lien, how much was it, but I was under the impression that there was because the house in that situation should have a lien. I knew, I was assuming that there are some lien, but I didn't know to that amount.
Okay. Okay.
And, and also, if I may, there are two other houses on the same street distressed, and I am considering to buy and fix them up. But if you guys are going to penalize me for what I am doing right, and, and I'm going to lose money, I, I will be hesitant to do that. I totally understand accountability, and I totally respect what you guys are trying to do, but penalizing me for coming and fixing the problem that the owners couldn't, that prevents me from doing that again, at least in this community. There are two homes extremely distressed. The owners have no money to fix it. The only way to get, to get, have that fixed, to sell it to somebody can do it, and that's the only way it will be get fixed. And if, and I'm assuming they might have some liens. And if I buy those and come here and you penalize me and fine me, and I end up losing money, I can't do this.
Well, keep, this is a very touchy area, you know. On one hand, we do appreciate the work that you've done. Looks great, and I know that you went through an awful lot to get it done, okay? But that doesn't negate the, the overall issue that we have. And this is, we have, we have ordinances that need to be followed, and I'm sorry that you bought the house not knowing that these, this issue was there, okay? But it's, it's part of the cost of that type of endeavor. At this point, I can't support anything lower than 10%.
Okay. Let me, let me just remind everybody, before we go too far off, that we're still on the question phase.
Sorry.
I know I'm coming to you, that we're still on the question phase.
That's all right.
I think the question's been answered. If you want to have your, take your seats, sir, and then we'll, okay. So we're still in questioning, discussions coming. Councilmember Abel?
My question, I think, is for the attorney, is do we have a written policy about the 10%? Or is it just something that we do sometimes, or...
I'm not aware of any written policy. It seems to be a historical thing that, that it's been done that way in the past. I don't know of any other reason why we've picked 10%.
Do we know if that 10% policy has been consistently applied in distressed properties such as this?
David wants to answer.
I don't, it's not just the, it's not just distressed property, properties, it's every property. So some are distressed, some are not distressed. It could just be some simple code violation. It seems to be, they want to cover the costs, and 10% seems to be the average recommendation. Usually, 10% will cover the costs and more. And, and the $3,000 that was approved by the board more than covered the costs.
So it's, it's less of a standard procedure that's written down and more of a default procedure to go for 10%?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Abel, I think the code board chair might have had some input on that. Is that okay if he responds to the question as well?
Counsel is right that there is not a written policy to go 10%. It's, it's kind of, it's, and it's not, normally, what, what we look at is cost, okay? Depending on the facts of the case, the length of the violation, et cetera, et cetera, the, it's, it's cost and/or 10%, whichever is higher, okay? And in most cases, the 10% and the cost kind of evens out most of the time. In some cases, like for this particular one, it ends up being a bit higher. Again, in this particular case, the $3,000 is definitely more than the cost, and the $3,000, again, in my opinion, was a fair and equitable adjustment to the 10% in order to bring it in front of you and knowing that the house was being put up for sale. We have always stood by the fact that we are not a revenue stream for the city. We are there to get compliance, compliance... Compliance was had, albeit four years late, and $3,000 more than covers the city's cost.
Thank you.
If I can just add to that, as the previous code board chair, the 10% guide was developed some years ago as a guideline, as a starting point for these, because we were all over the place. You know, we had no idea what, some people would come and ask, many of them would come and ask for it to be reduced to zero. And so, years ago, a 10% was developed as a starting point. It was never intended to be a written in stone policy. It was, this is the place where we start. And that was developed to prevent us from starting at city cost. That was deemed to be not where we wanted to start. So that's how the 10% thing came about. But it was never hard fat, was never meant to be, anyway, hard, fast 10%.
It was a guide, not a rule.
Right. Correct. So, I have one question for the petitioner. I don't know what the council is going to do here in a few moments, but assuming hypothetically, yes, if you would approach the podium, if the council were to accept this recommendation and reduce the lien to $3,000, it would be payable within 30 days, or it would revert back to the original amount. Are you prepared to pay the $3,000 fine if it gets approved within 30 days?
Yes, sir.
You are, okay. The reason I asked it is I know you're trying to sell the house. If it doesn't sell, you're still prepared to pay the three, I don't want this thing to revert back.
No, sir, I will, I will pay it as if it...
Okay, that was my question. Thank you. All right, councilmembers. Vice Mayor Donahue?
I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready for them.
We are, that's the next step.
I move to approve to accept the board recommendation to City Council that the fine in case 16-0491 for the property located at 108 Mission Hills Avenue be reduced from $64,800 to $3,000 contingent upon the fine being paid within 30 days of the council decision, or it would revert to the original amount of 64,800, and the city is authorized to enforce the fine in accordance with the law.
There is a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Abel?
So for me, my biggest concern is equity, which means that regardless of who you are, whether you're an individual, or an LLC, or whoever you are, the same rules should apply to you. And for me, I would really want to see the policy written, written down. Like, we start at 10%, and we could go down to city costs in some instances, or whatever. But I think that we need to make sure we establish that moving forward, so that we don't have more hairy situations like this, where it feels like the code enforcement board recently, nobody's fault, has, it's sort of capricious. It's sort of like, well, this is the 10%, here's the city cost, and let's pick something in the middle to make everybody here happy. And for me, that just seems like a, an easy way to, to not be equitable. So those are my thoughts on this, but, okay, that's all.
Other comments on the motion? Councilmember Chambers?
Yeah, and not too long ago, the 10% was a fairly standard number, and lately, it seems to have gone down to cost, city cost, regardless of the 10%. And that's where the board is. The board, in their deliberations, they do talk about the 10%, and they talk about city costs. And to their credit, they're getting every, they're looking at each case individually and discussing length of time, things like that. Chairman Pagorilich mentioned that earlier tonight. So I'm comfortable with, in this case, with the $3,000. I would also have been comfortable with, at the higher number, the 10%, but that's the decision that the code board made, and I want to support them. So that's my reasoning behind it.
Other discussion on the motion? I'd like to make a couple, I'm sorry, you made the motion, so let me go first.
Well, I just have one more comment. I think sometimes, we all know this house. We know this house. Why did this fine, there's a point when, I mean, we have, we've talked about, we've had other houses in the, in the, in the city, that the fines are more than the house is worth. At some point, is there, is there something written that says, we have to do something other than fines? Like, we have to move to, I don't know what the, I don't know what the punishment would be, okay? But it was obvious that this particular homeowner, as I recall, Mr. Barone, wasn't this homeowner still in the house until recent, until, yeah, until just before he sold it? So he was living in deplorable condition, which meant he had no way of fixing any of the problems. So it's a two-pronged problem here. We have huge fines for people who are never going to be able to fix them. And then if they try to sell them, they're out of a home, they're not gonna get, he didn't probably get much, whatever he paid, I don't know. I, I am also very bothered by the fact that it isn't always front and center, that there's a municipal fine on a house. That surprises me, the comment that you made, that, that, you know, it's not, it's more than buyer beware, beware, for sure. So that, that's why I'm happy this house looks the way it does, I'm happy it's happened, but I do think going down the road, we're gonna need to look at some other, other ways of doing some of these fines.
I have a couple of comments on the motion, which I'm gonna support, by the way, but I wanted to talk about why. First of all, I want everybody to understand that a $3,000 fine is almost three times what the city incurred in costs, so we're more than covering city costs. The issue of any permits, and so that's, that's really kind of a separate issue. If he fails to do something or perform that's required by his permits, that's another case, not this case. That's, you can't, can't, those things don't mix, right? So if there's a new violation of some sort, that has to be brought up under a new violation. So I do understand the sticky spot the code board's in. I've been in that spot myself, and we've wrestled with city cost, 10%, and the fundamental thing is, every case is different, right? And if we make it too cumbersome and too unfriendly for people to come in and buy distressed properties and rehabilitate them and sell them, guess what's gonna happen? They're gonna do that in Hillsborough County or Tampa, and they're not gonna do that, and our properties are gonna sit. So I do think we need to do this a better way. There's no reason why, why people similarly situated should come here, buy a house, and have absolutely no idea what the city is gonna do about these huge outstanding liens until they've already bought the house, rehabilitated the house, because they can't petition for a lien reduction until it's in compliance. So they've already sunk $300,000, and then they just hope that the code board and the city council are reasonable on the nights that they come before them. There's a better way to do business, and I will bring something before this council in the near future at a meeting with some proposals for us to have some discussion. This decision, this decision should be done, he should know exactly what he's getting into before he buys these properties. And, and I think there's ways to do that. So, long discussion, I apologize, but I will support the motion. Other discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. So, sir, the fine has been reduced to $3,000. You have 30 days from tonight's date to pay the fine, and city clerk, Mr. Barone, can guide you through that process. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1510 for RZP 20-01 rezoning the southern 15.07 acres of folio number 038218-0000. I'll open the public hearing. I'll ask anyone who intends to speak on this matter to stand for the oath to be administered by the city clerk.
Good.
Very good. City attorney, would you poll the council for ex parte communication, please?
If anyone has had any ex parte communication with regard to this matter, you need to state what that was. If it was written, then if you, you need to present a copy of it to the clerk's office to be put into the record. If you have spoken to anybody about this, you need to state who that communication was with, when this took place, and what the substance of the communication was. So I'll start with Councilwoman Abel. Have you had any ex parte communication?
No, none.
Councilwoman Donahue?
I have had none.
Meyer?
No.
Councilman Schuster, okay?
I have had none.
Thank you.
Senior Planner Gus Karpis will explain.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. You get a break from all those folio numbers, but it's coming back next meeting, twice.
At least it's all in one parcel, that's good.
Yes. So what you have before you tonight is a rezoning request for the folio number you mentioned. The property owner is Beatrice Lovelace Family LP. The applicant is Half Associates Incorporated. But you have is an address, unaddressed property located south of Harney Road, west of Industrial Lane, and north of Harney Bypass Canal. The current zoning is agricultural urban, and the proposed zoning is planned development. It's that little area there of 15.07 acres. Now, coming in, the property has to be rezoned to planned development rather than light industrial. That's required by the city's comprehensive plan, which states that anything located with the CMU-12 future land use designation must be rezoned as planned development for any new development or substantial expansion of an existing use. Don't know why it's written that way, but we did check it out, and that's how it is written. So what they're gonna be proposing, and this is gonna be on a site plan future, probably September 7th or maybe later, depending on the DRC review, is for a 1,075, 175,500 square foot warehouse facility. And again, this will be a site plan submitted at a later date for, for review. I have submitted some elevations. Again, these are conceptual elevations. I don't know that they're final at this point, but you're looking at north-south elevations, 780 linear feet with a maximum height of 44 foot. And again, these will be reviewed later. East-west elevations, again, you've got a 44 foot, and I believe that's a parapet wall, correct? And you got 225 linear feet there. And here are some color, colored renderings of the east elevation entering the site, and then the north elevation. And again, when the site plan comes in, I have many more colored elevations. So the planning commission staff reviewed this and found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan. The development review committee has no objections on the rezoning request, and the city staff recommends the council approve the first reading of 1510 for RZP 20-01. I stand for questions. The applicant has representatives here.
Very good. Would the applicant like to make a presentation or a comment?
You don't have, you can answer.
You don't have to, you can.
You don't have to, you can just be here for questions.
Okay, very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant? Councilmember Chambers?
Yes, looking at just the map, the subject site, is it accessed by Industrial Drive to Industrial Lane to Mason Drive to 301?
Yeah, from Mason down Industrial, I gotta look, because I can't read the writing there. I can't read the roads, they're so small there, even on my map. So I guess it's Industrial Lane down to Industrial Drive. There's already a nub into the property there, so it would come off of Mason, Mason down south. Yes, you've got a, you've got a better, you've got a better one, thank you, Brooke. Yeah, so they would come off of Mason, south on Industrial Lane, and then west off of Industrial Drive. And there is already a stub there to that property.
Thank you very much.
Other councilmember questions?
That was, that was kind of my question, too. So the white section, is that the dairy?
That, currently, that is part of the dairy property.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
But only that, only that south portion is being rezoned.
Okay. Seeing no more questions, I close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning the southern 15.07 plus-minus acres of folio number 0382180000, located south of Harney Road, west of Industrial Lane, and north of Harney Bypass Canal, from zoning classification agricultural urban to planned development for RZP 2101, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing for severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1510 on the first reading?
To approve first reading ordinance 1510 for RZP 20-01.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Ordinance is passed on first reading. Ordinance 1510 will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. Thank you very much. Next item is a resolution awarding the continuing contract for miscellaneous concrete flatwork. City engineer Brian McCarthy will explain. Welcome, Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Brian McCarthy, city engineer. Today, I'm seeking approval for the contractors selected under the continuing services contract for miscellaneous concrete flatworks. Earlier this year, the city advertised an invitation to bid number 21-009 for miscellaneous concrete flatwork to construct sidewalks, driveways, and curbs and gutters within the city's right-of-way. The seven contractors who submitted a bid and are recommended are, in no specific order, Ajax Paving Industries of Florida, American Construction Services, Aziz Construction Company, CNT Contracting Services, Harbor Contracting, Malex &amp; Sons, and Tampa Bay Construction and Engineering. Similar to the general asphalt contract that city council approved earlier this year, this concrete flatwork contract would allow the city to issue task work orders. For instance, city staff is aware of a sidewalk needing replaced along West River Drive. This contract allows the city staff to issue task work order to correct the issue. That said, staff recommends city council approve, excuse me, city council authorize the city manager to execute contracts with the previously identified contractors to conduct as needed concrete flatwork for an initial two-year term with an option of a three-one-year extensions. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmember questions for city engineer?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I know the sidewalk issue is a hot topic, I get beat up on it regularly. My question, though, is, how open-ended is this? I mean, what's, is there a dollar threshold before, it seems to be, and, there's no numbers associated with this that I saw.
So this is just a general contract?
Okay.
When we start issuing out the task work orders, it'll be dollar values?
Okay, so then, and we have our own spend, we have our pre-established spending limits for those that'll, that'll manage that? Okay, so make sure we, our strength...
Pretty much allows us to get contractors in the pack to do the work?
Understood, understood, okay. I just want to make sure we're not, you know, blank checking this into oblivion. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, that was, similar question to me. I wondered, so basically, this is a pool of contractors, and sometimes the first, your first three choices don't have time for you, and the next one is available. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmembers, okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second. Motion and a second by councilmember Schuster. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Next item on the agenda is a resolution establishing the tentative millage rate. Finance director Lynn Boswell will explain. Welcome, Mrs. Boswell.
Thank you.
Ms. Ringham? Ms. Gringram, welcome.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Council. Pursuant to Florida Statute Section 205A, the city's first step in the annual budget adoption process is to compute a proposed millage rate necessary to fund a tentative budget using no less than 95% of the taxable value certified by the property appraiser. On or before August 4, 2021, the city is required to advise the property appraiser of the proposed millage rate, the rolled-back millage rate, and the date, time, and place of the city's public hearing to consider the proposed millage rate and tentative budget. The tentative millage rate that is adopted should be a rate the City Council does not expect the adopted budget to exceed, although the rate may be decreased either before or at the first and/or final budget public hearings. Conversely, if the rate adopted at the public hearings in September exceeds the proposed rate, the city will incur the expense of notifying each taxpayer of this increase by first-class mail. After the completion of several budget workshops, council has determined that the tentative millage rate should be set at 6.555, which is not less than last year's millage rate of 6.555. City staff shall prepare a budget with a millage rate of 6.555, which would generate $13,892,083 in tax revenue and allowance for continuation of existing public services. Staff recommends that City Council approve a resolution setting the tentative millage rate at 6.555 per $1,000 of assessed value as determined by the Hillsborough County Property Appraisers Office.
Thank you, Mrs. Boswell. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers, do you have questions? Any questions for the Finance Director? Very good, if not, we'll entertain a motion to establish the tentative millage rate.
I move to approve a resolution establishing the tentative millage rate at 6.555 per $1,000.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council business, any carryover council business from previous meetings? Vice Mayor Donahue?
Is this where you would like to discuss the FLC?
It's on my list, we can, so this is fine, go right ahead.
All right, so I distributed the items, hopefully, I know the first time I sent it didn't go through, did it go through the second time? Okay, all right. And after you weeded through all of that information, what you really needed to read was the email that gave us the, which, by the way, I brought one for everybody, if you want a case, just in case. So the two, I'll pass these down, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared, I thought it would be. The two items that are on my, the policy committee that I sit on are cybersecurity and short-term rentals, not in that order. However, at the meeting in August, when we meet again, we will decide which one is our actual policy position, and the other one will be our priority position. Okay, so what you have before you is the language that they have drafted, and what I need to take to this meeting, or send actually to them fairly soon, is if you have any changes to the way this is written. If you don't have any changes, this is the way, now I'm sure, when I get to the policy committee, no telling, many others will be there, but if you felt strongly one way or the other about what they're supporting, if not, I'll take it as is. I didn't, personally did not see anything that, that I felt needed to be changed. I'm glad that we're still supporting these. I will tell you that there are other items that are worrisome and that you will be hearing about as they come forward. I mean, one of them is Attorney General Designation of Matters of Great Governmental Concern, which in a nutshell, I mean, that sounds like, who knows what that even means, right? What it means is that, let's say we and all the cities in our surrounding area felt like we had a lawsuit that we could bring forward to an opioid company or something that's causing us great concern. The state could literally take over our suit, considering it a matter of great governmental concern, and then if they won, whatever the money raised, you know, won, they would take, and we would have been out, we necessarily would have benefited from the suit. So I'm not sure what's behind that, but I just want you to know there's some other home rule issues, you will be, you will be hearing about that one. That one was hotly debated at, at the committee meeting. So if you have anything to add to this, let me know.
So the two items that are voting, member, who will be me, or will be voting on, are these two items?
What you will be voting on as our voting delegate is, once these have, so each, there are five different committees, this, this one is coming from the municipal administration. Mrs. Schoen sits on land use, and so we will bring, we will decide which one of these two is our priority and the language, and they will each be presented to the voting membership, and you will either approve that, or, you know, after much discussion.
So each of the five committees will have their own priority?
Yes, yes, based on their niche.
One, are they limited to one?
We have one that is considered our, our priority, which we will decide, and the second one is something that we, we're, we stand to, you know, to, to support, okay? So, yeah, so you will have it, and it's, you know, sometimes you think, oh, well, no one's going to vote against those committees, they've been working on this, but, you know, if, if I'm, if I feel strongly, if our council feels strongly about something that's not in, one of us is representing, you have every right to say, no, you're not being strong enough, or you picked the wrong one, or whatever.
Okay.
So, that's my, that's my report.
Very good. Councilmembers, if there's anything you've read in this or in any of the documents we've gotten from the vice mayor, that you wish to express your opinion to me on, how you would prefer I vote, now would be the time, this is our last meeting. So if there's anything that you want me to champion on behalf of the council, now is the time for you to provide me your input.
Okay, then, excuse me, if I may, then.
Sure.
We gotta pick one?
No, no, you could say, we agree on both of these, we support what this particular committee supports. I can only bring to you what was brought to me. So you can say yes, Mayor Ross, when it's, because he's been our, he is our delegate, when it comes to this, we agree. If, if you think one of these is more important than the other, you know, if you think short-term, right now, the way it was voted, short-term rentals, cybersecurity, and the last one was smoking in public parks, that's how the committee voted. So when they voted, that, they sort of set the tone as one, two, three, okay? So, but if you think, if, if our council thought that cybersecurity should be number one, they will ask you that, which of the two? And, and when I go back to the committee, I would say, well, look, I have to support cybersecurity as the number one, because that's what my council has voted for. So hopefully, you know, if, if, right now, it's pretty much listed on here the way the committee voted, so if you want to leave it as such, so that the first is short-term rentals, and the second is cybersecurity, so be it, I, I will support that as well. I voted in that direction, short-term and then cybersecurity.
I would have to rank it that way also, short-term rentals and cybersecurity.
And, and I think it's important that we, as a council, provide input to our delegates on various boards, but we can't expect to tie their hands either, because they're in the room, they hear thing, you know, I mean, as the discussion goes on, so we, I don't like the idea that we can vote tonight and tell you what you have to, I don't think that's how that should work.
But you know, if, if I really knew, let's, let's say it was short-term rentals and the smoking one, that, there was a lot of discussion on that. If I really knew in advance that we were strongly supportive of one, it would help me out a lot, okay? First of all, it would give, have given me input, but I appreciate the fact that you...
I, I'm comfortable with the ranking that you've given us.
Yes.
And I will, at least I think I will, unless I hear something that I, unless I hear something that changes my mind, I'm prepared to support both of these.
And would, would you like for me to give you the printed, so that you can include this in the minutes? I, I hate for the...
I'm just going to attach it.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
So is there anything that you've read in any of these other, that anybody has heartburn about, or, they look pretty straightforward to me, I don't see anything, okay, very good. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No.
Any other council business? Carryover council business? Okay, seeing none, new business in board reports?
I do.
New business, Councilmember Abel?
As long as I'm the last one to go, does anyone have anything? I'd like to go after.
I've got a couple things, sure.
Can I talk to you?
You can, if you want, sure. Anybody else? Actually, this would be better under City Manager's report, so go ahead.
Okay. Not, not yet, please, no, not yet, please. So, to, to be a bit, a bit vulnerable here, the information that I have to share with you today, it makes me really uneasy, and I wish that there was an easier way to do this, but I have some information to share with council that, about some alleged wrongdoing that I believe merits investigation. And after reviewing the city charter and speaking with the city attorney about how to approach investigations, I've come to the understanding that in the interest of transparency to the public, in accordance with the Sunshine Law, this is the way it has to be shared with you. So I was presented with some written allegations and documented evidence by a person who wishes to remain anonymous, and to summarize, the allegations are that the city manager, or under his direction, his subordinates, falsified documents to conceal that an unlicensed contractor was illegally chosen over a licensed one to complete the racquetball court conversion at the Family Recreation Center earlier this year. And this budgeted expense was below the threshold requiring council to review it. So I do have some copies for each of you of these allegations and supporting documentation that were provided to me, and I just wanted to say that I'm really sorry to spring this information on you in this format, I, I really didn't want to blindside anybody, but I want to work with you now, as a council, to, to address this. And given the constraints of the Sunshine Law and the seriousness of these allegations, this really allows us the opportunity to minimize risk to named employees in these accusations. So I'd, I'd like to read them for the record and also give you a copy of what I was given by the person who spoke with me, and the city clerk has those documents right now, if you wouldn't mind. So I'll read them out loud, and hopefully we can process these as I do. The allegation says city manager Charles Stevenson, who was a City of Temple Terrace government employee, possibly violated Florida Statute 838.022 official misconduct by personally falsifying an official document and/or directing subordinates to knowingly allow, or knowingly allowing subordinates to falsify official documents, to assist an unlicensed contractor to be awarded a work contract for construction renovation services for the City of Temple Terrace. This allowed the unlicensed contractor business to directly receive payment for construction renovation work, which should have only been awarded to a licensed contractor business. A licensed contractor, Moreno Industrial Services, also bid for the same contract, but was not selected for the renovation, construction. If true, the city manager committed a felony of the third degree. The basis of the allegation is between January of 2021 and February of 2021, the City of Temple Terrace accepted bids for construction renovation work to be completed at the City of Temple Terrace Family Recreation Center Racquetball Courts, located at 6610 White Way Drive. A construction businessperson who Charles Stevenson knew not to possess proper contracting licenses was awarded the construction renovation contract with the knowledge and recommendation of Charles Stevenson. Amir Anisi, Director of Community Development, is able to verify that city manager Charles Stevenson knew the businessperson was not properly licensed at the time of awarding the renovation construction contract, despite having been properly licensed contractor submitting estimates. This unlicensed businessperson operated under the Florida business name 383 Construction LLC, and was owned and operated by David M. Morecambe. A search with the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation confirmed that David M. Morecambe had no contractor's license to perform construction services of any kind in the state of Florida. A copy of those search results is included with supporting documents. Apparently to conceal the fact that the business awarded the renovation construction contract was not a Florida licensed contractor, city manager Charles Stevenson either directed subordinates or knowingly allowed subordinates to falsify the city permit to include a third and uninvolved construction company named DWJ Development, Inc. DWJ Development, Inc. was never present during the bid process, never consulted with city staff, was never on-site to perform, supervise, or manage any work, and was not the recipient of the payment upon completion of the renovation construction process, project. The only plausible reason this company name is on the permit is to conceal the fact that an unlicensed business was actually awarded the construction renovation contract. Leisure Services Director Carl Langfield can verify that DWJ Development, Inc. was never present, never consulted with city staff, was never on-site to perform, supervise, or manage any work, and did not receive any of the payment from the City of Temple Terrace for completion of the renovation construction project. Internal City of Temple Terrace finance records also verify all payments for this construction renovation project were made directly to 383 Construction LLC, with zero payments to DWJ Development, Inc. Proof of the payment being made directly to 383 Construction LLC for completion of the construction renovation project, and a copy of the involved city permit is included with the supporting documents. In an attempt to further conceal the fact that the business awarded the construction renovation contract was not a Florida licensed contractor, city manager Charles Stevenson personally signed or allowed a subordinate to sign, on his behalf, a fraudulent Hillsborough County Notice of Commencement Form, which was later submitted to the Hillsborough County Clerk of Court as an official record. On this notice of commencement documented 20 days after the purchase order was written to 383 Construction LLC, city manager Charles Stevenson entered his own name as the contractor for the construction work instead of the real contractor, 383 Construction LLC, or the uninvolved third-party contractor, DWJ Development, Inc. The only logical reason city manager Charles Stevenson entered his own name on this form was to conceal the entities involved, create confusion, and/or attempt to proactively create a plausible explanation for his involvement with the misconduct by avoiding any contractor name. A copy of the involved notice of commencement is included with the supporting documents. Prior notice of commencement forms have been completed by city manager Charles Stevenson during his career with the City of Temple Terrace, where he entered the correct contractor name in the appropriate place on the same form. As an example, one of these prior forms was obtained and is included with the supporting documents. In the event city manager Charles Stevenson claims he did not understand the notice of commencement form, or somehow thought he was completing the notice of commencement form properly and legally, and then we have some asterisk stuff, but, and the Florida statutes. So I couldn't sit on this, I couldn't talk about it to the city manager because it pertains to him, and it's something that, that definitely needs to come before you all, so I hope that we can discuss this and assess its validity so that we can move forward.
Okay, let me, I don't have a copy of the city charter in front of me, do you have that accessible? I know what it says in terms of internal complaints.
Right.
I don't know if the wording of that paragraph applies to all allegations. What I'm trying to get at is the wording in the city rules directs this to me.
Specifically for instances of discrimination?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to get, the language of the city.
But it's not in the charter, I, I did look this up.
Okay.
Coming before you.
Right. I don't...
It's not in the charter.
I don't believe there's anything in the charter.
It's in the city rule.
In the, in the rules and regs, we, probably about two and a half, three years ago, council did add a section, but it was focused on complaints of harassment, discrimination, that sort of thing. It didn't specifically address... that sort of thing. It didn't specifically address, uh, other wrongdoings.
Okay. So, here's what I would ask the council. We don't need to turn this into a kangaroo court, or, I mean, we, everybody involved in this. We need to get to the facts. But we don't, and I'm not upset with you. There is no other way to bring it up. I understand. Um, I guess I would ask for the council's, um, hmm, I don't know if the permission's probably not the right word. I'm not sure what the right word is, but I, I, we cannot do this by committee.
Right.
This, this has got to be done and, and, um, the proper course has got to be determined. And, I mean, there's a lot of steps here. And we should not, anybody here should not be drawing any conclusions about the guilt or anything based on an anonymous document that's been sent to a council member. That, that, so, nobody should go out of here thinking that they've heard the smoking gun and, oh, my gosh, this is... The truth of the matter is, is we don't know what in this document is or is not true until we investigate. And, and which we, of course, will do. So, um, I just want to caution us, the public, anybody watching this, the employees, just stay calm, right? Not everything you hear on first blush is always correct, right? And we will get to the bottom of whatever there is to get to the bottom of. So, um, I don't know any other way to proceed except to give it to me and, and let me report back to you. At, I mean, I don't know exactly how we'll do that. What's that?
You have no choice. You have to investigate it.
Well, my, my feeling is that the city rule that we established a few years ago that was enacted on the basis of a complaint. And that rule doesn't apply to this, but to me, it kind of clearly indicates the intent of the council at the time was for this to go to the mayor for, um...
Can I just...
Yeah, please do. Help.
Thank you for giving me a heart attack here. I'm really having a, having a hard time with this. But I, I heard several names of employees who could be in jeopardy of losing their jobs if we don't do something tonight about Mr. Stevenson's authority over them. So, two things. One, can we consider putting Mr. Stevenson on a leave of absence or paid leave of absence for, while we investigate this? Because tomorrow morning, there could be people who are fired instantly on the assumption, on the assumption of, of, okay.
Let me, let me...
I don't want to ask any questions of Mr. Stevenson, because I agree with you. But I also agree, also feel like, yes, it should go to you, but because we're just asking you to act in this capacity, does anyone questioned have, I mean, do they have anything writing on whether or not they could speak truthfully or not? I mean, isn't the FDLE maybe where we should move this? I mean, there's statutes involved.
Well, I, that's why I'm asking you to let me write.
Well, then I'm asking for two things then.
Mr. Stevenson, just take a breath, okay? Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
If I may.
Well, I wouldn't, if you may.
No, you should not, you should not address this.
Charles, Charles, be careful, please.
Relax.
All right, just relax. Take a breath.
Yeah.
All right, nobody's, nobody's drawing any...
I'm, if I, if I may, excuse my voice.
That's fine.
If, if you, if you want to, to do that.
My, please understand.
Charles, nobody's drawing any conclusions on this, okay? We've got this document that we heard, just, you know.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay. All right. Let me...
And that's the point of my concern, is that guilty or not guilty, he's not going to be given the chance to prove himself by just us asking, or, or us to find out that this is true, just by asking an employee, hey, is this true?
Vice Mayor Donahue, let me, let me do a couple things.
Just really, yes.
Okay, first of all, I, I know I don't maybe have a right to do this.
Yeah.
But I would ask this council to trust me. And I know maybe I don't have the capital with you to ask that, but I've been investigating allegations much more serious than this for decades. And so, you, if you will trust me and the city attorney, this one was hit right in my part of the field, okay? So, I, I'm asking for your indulgence here, and I'm really asking for us to withhold. In terms of putting the city manager on leave, this is an anonymous complaint. We're talking about our chief executive. Now, if there's retaliation towards employees, that, that in itself is illegal. And, and this has been read into the record in a public meeting. So, if, for instance, one of these employees needed to be disciplined, I would trust that the city manager, knowing that this has just been received, would consult with me and say, hey, listen, I've got an issue with an employee, but I'm scared to act because they're named in this and I don't want it to be... I, I, I really think a man at the level of the chief executive, I would hope, would know that retaliation is a very serious act.
I, I...
I don't think it's appropriate to put anybody on leave based on a...
Well, I'm talking paid leave. So, and I too have been in this position before, not here, in the business world. And in order to protect the employees, the person who was, the allegation was made against was put on paid leave, so that no actions of any kind could be taken. And, and the employees out there know that, you know, we hear all kinds of stuff. You do too. You know, I'm worried about this. I don't like this, whatever. Okay. And I've always said, have you taken this to the city manager? No, no, I can't. I can't do it. I, I'll lose my job. And so, guess what? I don't take it either, because it would point immediately back to the employee who makes the comment. So, whoever wrote this, um, has listed quite a few details. And, um, you know, in, in light of, you know, look, look at what's happened in, this is no comparison, but, you know, like, look what's happened in other cities where, um, inefficient, uh, documentation was done on permits or building codes or whatever. And there are lives lost over that. And this isn't going to happen with a pickleball court, okay? But this is, this is a, this is, this is extremely valuable for us to do this right. And my only concern, I mean, what you're telling me is, don't worry, nobody will get fired, nothing will happen, everybody will be copacetic, it'll be great.
I didn't say that.
Well...
I said retaliation is illegal.
It is, it is, but, you know, you can come up with reasons to let somebody go. I, I don't, I'm just very concerned about that if, if you, and if you're the one asking someone, you know, why did you do this? And they're afraid to say why, or who directed them, there, there's no penalty for them not telling you the truth. And I'm not accusing anyone of not. I just am, I don't think I've blushed this much in a long time. This is really, and, and I really am concerned about the employees involved. There has to be someone here who said, look, I've, I've just got to tell somebody something. And that person decided to, you know, to tell Ms. Abel. And, and we don't even know if this is from an employed person. We have no idea.
No, we don't.
But it reads like somebody who really is a fly on the wall. And that's what worries me. That's what worries me.
My question for you, um, Mr. Mayor, is, yes, I can speak up. My, my question is, for the duration, like, what, can you tell me the timeline you anticipate this sort of investigation might take?
No, I can't, because I don't, you never know where it's going to go. I, I can tell you that I will do this with all due haste. I'll be talking to the attorney in the morning about, uh, the best way to proceed. Councilmember Schisler.
I, excuse me. Um, if this, if this is true, it's very wor, it's, it's a serious issue. Um, who prepared this? Did the, was this document given complete?
The packet was given just like that to me. I did make photocopies myself.
Okay, that's right. But you, whoever, whoever made the original allegations is the one that...
Yes, I, I didn't do anything to that.
Okay. Um, I have full confidence in, in the mayor's investigatory capabilities, and, uh, I don't believe that there will be any interim repercussions to any employees within the city. Uh, it's not like we have five thousand employees that somebody could disappear and we wouldn't hear about it. Okay? So, I, I don't think we should, um, suspend anybody or put anybody on leave of absence at this point until we know more, because we don't know enough right now. Um, I, I have to, we're going to have to read this a couple, three times, because there's a lot of, this goes off in several different directions. So, at this point, I'm, I'm, um, you know, Mr. Stevenson knows that there's people watching. I don't think he's going to do anything rash. Um, I, I would, I would hope not, but, um, I would, let's see where the investigation goes, if you're willing to undertake it.
Well, let's, let's be clear. It's probably not me that's going to be doing this. I will cause it to be done. I'll, we'll get this done by somebody outside objective.
That's fine.
Not, I, I don't want any lingering things of politics, or personalities, or grudges, or any, I don't, we can't have, it's not fair to Mr. Stevenson to, to do that. Um, we'll have a objective, clear-cut, thorough investigation conducted. And the shape of that, who will do that, I can't answer that yet, because I need to read this through. I need to talk to Ms. Shon, um, to determine what's the appropriate. Councilmember Rabel.
I would also like to continue the discussion that, um, Councilwoman Donahue brought up about administrative leave. And I think that administrative leave exists for this purpose. It's protecting not just the employees named, but also this city manager himself, you know. Having, having a, a claim like this made against you is, is a heavy, a very heavy thing. And during that time, I mean, I think that administrative leave is kind of a, a safe place to go dur, during the course of an investigation. So, I support the idea of, of, um, administrative leave. But when we talk about, that's why I asked you about the duration of the investigation, which I know that would be hard to predict. But I think that, um, a short-term leave during the investigation is, is the right way to go in, in this situation. I know I have the advantage of having chewed on this for a few more days than you all, but it's just...
Well, let me, let me tell you why I'm opposed to it and a little more specific reason, all right? Typically, in, in my past, when the determination is made whether to put the accused employee on administrative leave or not, some of the factors that are weighed are, A, is there a credible complainant? Right? Is there somebody standing up here saying, I know this. I, I'm willing to swear to this. We don't have that. At the end of the day, as specific as this is and as damning as it sounds, it is what it is, to use a worn-out cliche. This is an anonymous complaint. It, we don't have a person. We have no idea. Now, we're inferring because of their specificity that they know what they're talking about. But that's not always a valid inference, because somebody could have had this all mushed up. We don't have, at least on the face, we don't have a credible complainant, at least not tonight. Well, you have an anonymous complaint. Number two, when considering whether to put somebody on leave or not, is generally considered, is whatever the allegation an ongoing injury? Is there something, in other words, sexual harassment? Well, this person's forced to work with this person every day, right? In this case, even if this is true, even if all of it is true, this is all done. It's all in the past. So, there's no ongoing nature to this, like, the harm is going to be exasperated if we don't act immediately. So, those are the reasons that I say, you know, anonymous complaint. I hear what you're saying, Vice Mayor. I'm not deaf to this. And I do think that we need to be watchful and cognizant of this. And there's some things I'd like to do tonight to make sure things are, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I get you. But what is it you're referring to?
This is the payment to the contractor who's not listed on the, on the, on the, as the bid, who, who won the bid. Three Eighty-three Construction, which was mentioned here. So, I was looking through here. This, this, this company is not the one who was listed. So, I, I don't want to, I don't want to delve into this, but I, I think, I think her point is, and I will second her motion, is it's a motion, whether this is an ongoing problem or not, for all we know, this is an ongoing problem. We don't know that. Okay? And the fact that we had a bid accepted by one company and somebody else got paid, that's not how it works. Yep, that is not how we do business here. We, we pick contracts and then we pay them. Now, if they have subcontractors, you still pay them and they pay everybody else, okay? That, that, I know how that works. But, I mean, that document right there and looking through this is, is scary.
Avoid getting into the merits of this. We're way too...
This is a copy of the invoice.
You're getting ahead of the...
I know. I'm sorry. But that's why I think it's too important not to put everything on pause. And you're exactly right. Without being on a leave of absence, he is basically suspended anyway, right? He needs to know this is what we're going to do. Someone else is going to run the show while you're on paid leave. I'm not asking that he be fired. I'm not asking that he be suspended without pay, because that would assume guilt. This is a way to talk to people, find out the case. Look, there's, if, if this is a copy from something, this must have come from a public request, right? I mean, how would somebody even get a copy of the purchase order? So, there, there's no doctoring something that was sent to you as a public request. That, that's probably the first place you should go, is who requested the public request? I don't know. I'm not looking at that. I'm just saying, to protect all parties involved, remove Mr. Stevenson. We did this, you know, you just did the same thing, uh, Mr. Schisler, with the person from, uh, Hart. Board agreed. This is what we do. We put you on paid leave. We investigate. We come back.
That wasn't anonymous.
But it still removed the person from the day-to-day operation.
I, I, to, to your, to your point, I don't see a payment in here.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's...
But again, 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 I don't want to get, you're right.
The topic of discussion right now is the proposed leave of absence. Mr. Chambers.
Okay. First, I have every confidence in the mayor starting the investigation. I also think, uh, you've got to find a outside party to investigate. No city staff, any of that. It, it just makes sense. I really can't support a leave of absence. Uh, I think we have plenty of safeguards in place for Mr. Stevenson to do his job here and the employees to be protected. I really do. And from being a department head, you know, I, I would not feel uncomfortable in that situation. So, I, I couldn't support a leave of absence right now. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Shon, you were trying to say something, but that was like fifteen minutes ago. Did you lose the moment?
Oh, wait. I, I just think that, that council should ha, should vote, and someone should make a motion and vote on, uh, giving this over to the mayor to proceed and to find an independent investigator. That is what the procedure was that we had written into our policy before... That is what the procedure was that we had written into our policy before, is that the mayor would move forward with looking for an independent investigator. So, I would just be more comfortable that instead of, it sounds like everybody's on the same page, but at least make a motion and vote to act on that procedure.
I'll make that motion.
I think you've gotta articulate it.
All right, I move to-
Did she not make a motion, or she did?
No, she did not. You seconded something that didn't exist yet. I make a motion to have the mayor initiate the investigation by finding an independent outside source to do this and do this with utmost haste.
I'll second that.
The motion, and the second is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no nays. Okay. So, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm pretty sure this motion's going to die, but I would also like to make a motion to put the city manager on administrative leave for the duration of the investigation. My microphone is in a weird spot. I was saying, I would like to make a motion to place the city manager on administrative leave for the duration of this investigation.
And sadly, I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. I, I hear what you're saying. I do. And we're all thinking on the fly here tonight. This is not like we had backup stuff to think about all day. Can I guarantee you that I'm right about this? I just think an anonymous complaint is just, I don't think that's fair. And it will create the impression of guilt to do that. Now, I will very quickly add that this could change in an investigation. It could change very quickly. And if facts are uncovered that cause me, because I won't be able to keep you, you know, three times a day, I'm not gonna be able to update you. If facts are revealed that change my mind, I will, I guess, need to call an emergency meeting of the council pretty hastily to have you make that motion again. I don't know of any better way to do that.
That's all you can do.
That's all I can do. But at this point, I hear what you're saying, but I can't, I can't support it at this point, just based on the anonymous, that could change.
Just remember, this is anonymous with public records attached. There's a difference. If I just accuse you of being in favor of chocolate over vanilla, I have nothing to base it on.
I get it, Sherry, but this is also a quarter of an inch thick, and I haven't had time to read this.
Well-
It may change tomorrow. I mean, I, so, that's my discussion on the motion. We do have a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails three to two. I do have a directive for, I see one, two, three, four directors in attendance here. I need to get this out. Chief Kemp, you've been elected, right? I need finance, leisure services, community development, city engineer, whoever. I need all of our emails, documents, statements, records, permits, everything associated with this project, I need given to Chief Kemp. And Chief Kemp, I need you to put it all in one package, please, and deliver it to the city clerk, so that everything is in a bundle, right? So, this is a weird way to do it, but I just made a public records request, and I just made a, I know I'm kind of on shaky ground giving you a directive, but they've appointed me to investigate this, so that's what I need you to do. Everything associated with this project, and I need a mayor to get that word, and I need IT to do searches, I need finance, I need everything associated with this. And I need-
I'm afraid you need my trust.
Quickly.
Tomorrow morning.
Sooner's better than later. And keep in mind that, you know, Mr. Stevenson, his reputation and everything riding on this, so we don't need to drag our feet on this. Ms. Boswell.
I understand that you do have the written paper. I apologize, but I don't have all the names, all the things for me to take a look at in our contracts. I'm just letting you know-
The city clerk does. She has a copy. She can provide you with a copy. Okay.
I just had one more comment.
Please.
I hope this is a false allegation.
Me too.
Okay. I just wanna make that clear, because, you know, Mr. Stevenson and I have had discussions over the years that we didn't agree on. This is a serious allegation, and therefore, it's very upsetting, and I'm hopeful that it's incorrect. So, I'm not rooting for the other team, I promise.
Very good. Mrs. Boswell, on another topic, do you have any idea when we might get our budget books to look at?
In the absence of putting the city manager on leave, we were hoping this week yet. So, we've got a review. We went and reviewed once, and then we're gonna review it again. And this week was the goal, to get all of that done and over to you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. City Attorney, do you have any report?
I did, but not nearly significant enough to follow this, so I'll wait till next time.
Would the council's indulgence, I think, forego the rest of the agenda and adjourn, unless somebody has something? I don't think Mr. Stevenson's gonna be prepared to present.
I agree.
Very good. Any questions, any other business we can? I know we have the scheduled holidays. I know the city employees were-
That's a budget question, isn't it?
Please, Chief. Yeah.
So, prior to this meeting, I had a very brief discussion with the city manager, and one of the things that he was gonna bring up tonight was obviously the impacts of the COVID virus spreading and the nature that it has. As you've probably seen on the news, the hospitals are taking a big hit. Talked to our emergency, our doctor tonight, and she says it's pretty brutal right now in all emergency rooms. One of the things he was gonna discuss with you, and I don't really know exactly what his position is, so I can't state it, I can tell you what my position is, but the county in Tampa is still requiring people going inside to wear masks. And whether you're vaccinated or not, as you know, a lot of, because of this variant now, a lot of people that are vaccinated are getting it, and they're able to pass it on to other people. Luckily, and this is true, it's not just rumors, I've talked to the doctor, and she, most of those people are not, if you're vaccinated, you're not going to the ER. You may go to the ER, but you're not getting admitted. So, that's a good part. So, and maybe the city manager could discuss this more. Charles, I just was bringing up the fact that you were gonna bring up the possibility of maybe wearing masks indoors, so, for city employees, and also anybody that's coming into our city facilities, whether they're vaccinated or not. So, I don't really wanna, I didn't wanna steal his thunder, nor did I not wanna be remiss by not bringing up, because I know it was an important issue he and I have been talking about this week. So, I mean, if you, without talking to him, I don't really wanna make a recommendation of what the city, but that's something, I even read today that Hillsborough County is mandating all new employees get vaccinated. So, you know, we're in tough times, and in tough times, we have to make tough decisions. And, you know, nobody likes wearing a mask, you know, more than me, but, you know, I always say, COVID's not a big deal until you get it. And you never meet one person that's unvaccinated in a hospital bed and say that, you know, well, I'm glad I didn't get it. So, anyways, I just wanted to bring it out. I know-
I'm asking a question.
-gone here and jumped up there, but I-
I think, I think the Vice Mayor has a question for you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Hillsborough County has mandated that all of their employees be vaccinated?
I read it, you know, I read it in a news article today. Oh, it's all new employees, so apparently they feel more comfortable as they hire somebody. They're telling them that they need to get vaccinated. I assume that's legal. I'm not asking, I'm not stating we should do that. I'm showing you where some people are going with this, and obviously, a lot of private and public sector are making some of that mandatory. I'm not saying that, but I think maybe we need to step up our game a little bit.
I'm not sure what new employees means. I think that's gonna be rather problematic, if you're gonna make a new employee get vaccinated and yet somebody who's gonna be working in or from, who's gonna be working with is not vaccinated. There's so many moving parts with all this. I made kind of a list of items that we had to address a year and a half ago, and I don't know that I have made any strong decisions or recommendations for council, and it's really one of those things that, obviously, we're looking to protect our employees and certainly our visitors in our buildings. You know, we can certainly initiate a lot of things that aren't very inclusive to people. Certainly, wearing a mask is a personal preference, and certainly, if someone is not vaccinated, they should be wearing a mask, I believe. But then again, you know, in order to have a fair and equitable, for instance, through City Hall, I think at this point in time that we probably ought to go back to what we did before and mandate masks while you're in the building. But if you're in your own space, if you don't need to wear a mask, and if you go into common area, you probably shouldn't wear your mask. Again, practice social distancing, plenty of other items that I've looked down here is travel. At one point in time, a year and a half ago, we had travel restrictions that I think the whole country went through. I'm not suggesting we do any travel restrictions. I don't know that we're to that point. But certainly, the protocol that we had set up before was for the high department to monitor where people traveled to and from, so that at least we had some record of people's travels. A year and a half ago, we were really regimented in sanitizing buildings and equipment. That's certainly something that we- Bought material and supplies in order to do that. That's some of those things that, again, I think are common sense approach to disinfecting our buildings and equipment on a regular basis. We've kind of gotten away from it a little bit, because things have got a little bit better, and everybody's kind of a little bit at ease. But, for instance, tomorrow morning, we'll sanitize this room, just for the sake of having some regimented sanitation. And it doesn't take but an hour for some personnel to do that. So, we do have, there's a whole list, obviously, monitoring, paid cur rubs, some of these in outside businesses and communications. I don't know that we're to the point of requiring virtual meetings, but I do think we need to be just a little cautious with people coming into our building. Facilities has been put on notice to make sure that the temperature readings, readers are up and running. We have sanitizers and wipes and masks for everybody. So, I think what we need to do is to just do a common sense approach right now and not panic. But I can tell you this, all over the country, if you watch the news, there are states doing this, and states doing this, and New York is now mandating masks, and it is all over the board. I don't know that there is any clear direction, other than what kind of came out of CDC and said, "Wear a mask if you're indoors, whether you're vaccinated or not." Kind of pizza park was getting vaccinated. We're supposed to be vaccinated, we're not supposed to have this worry. But there is suggestion that vaccinated people can't carry and transmit the virus. So, I'd like to put a program together and share it with council about some suggestions that I wish had, so.
I appreciate that, that you're being proactive.
I will try to do that as quick as I can.
Other, other report? Mr. Stevenson, did you have anything else to?
The only other thing I want to bring up, and I handed out, and I think I passed this on a couple of reports-
Holidays?
Additional holiday. Again, this is one of those things that city manager's office puts out a yearly holiday schedule, if you would. Looks pretty much in line with the exception of, we have a floating holiday that nobody else has. Certainly, June 19th is now a federally recognized holiday. I would anticipate that we would recognize that day as well. But my question is, is if we start doing that, we're gonna end up with an extra day. Regularly scheduled days from the county in Tampa also include the Christmas Eve as a scheduled holiday. Ours is not scheduled. It is one of those things that the council gets to employees typically the first of the year in December. So, I guess I'm open for suggestions on what we'd like to do with the extra day. I know that our reach out to Tampa and to Hillsborough County, they are just adding another day.
Well, I don't make many motions, but let me just cut to the chase and make a motion to add this holiday to our scheduled holidays.
I'll second it.
Is there discussion on the motion?
Okay.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays? There's your answer.
There you go. That was fast.
Anything else, Mr. Stevenson?
Okay.
Do you, I don't know if you're gonna have this or not, do you have any, I know we've talked, but it's been a while, any idea what's going on with the wall out there on Temple Terrace Highway, that tree and the wall?
Yes, sir. That-
There is a contractor that has been selected to take the two trees down.
Okay.
We have gotten prices to reinstall some chain link fencing. We've measured it out. It was actually supposed to start Monday, yesterday, with the tree removal, and weather is kind of dampening that, and obviously, today as well.
Okay. So, it's-
As soon as I get, as soon as I get an adequate schedule, I'll let you know.
Okay.
I mean, it's, schedule will be done.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else, Councilmember Vice Mayor?
Two things. I have an invitation. This Thursday night is a town hall meeting with Representative Ventress Driscoll at the Lightfoot Center. All are invited. And the second one is, school starts Monday, if you can believe it or not, August 10th.
Tuesday.
So, or Tuesday, sorry. Starts Tuesday, so be aware. More bicycles, more kids, more traffic. Just be cautious. Thank you. That's all.
That's it. Councilmembers? Mr. Stevenson, anything?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Director, city attorney, everybody's good. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.